I now call the East Lime Aquifer Protection Agency Regular Meeting of April 10, 2025, to order at 7:00 PM. I'm here, Mr. Peck?
Yep.
Ms. Markowitz is absent. Mr. Foley?
Yep.
Ms. Kalal? Ms. Jett Harris?
Yep.
Mr. Wiska? No. Ms. Susko? Oh, good. Do you mind taking Ms. Markowitz's place? Thank you. Ms. Yuhas? I don't think she's ever missed before.
She's never missed.
I know.
She's all right.
Mr. Maholland's here and Ms. LaRocco. Ms. Hardy is not here yet. So we'll move on to new business, which is approval of registrations. And I believe we have a memo to read. I can tell which ones they are, and then we'll read this memo.
All right, I'll read it.
It'll be for Riverhead Building Supply, 49 Industrial Park Road, Niantic. Advanced Power Equipment, 253 Boston Post Road, East Lime, Niantic Tool Incorporated, 32 Industrial Park Road, Niantic. McCafferty Property Services LLC, 28C Industrial Park Road, Niantic. New registrations, Niantic Star LLC, 263 Flanders Road, Niantic. And Niantic Soapy Noble LLC, 230 Flanders Road, Niantic. And we have one memo, please.
Okay. Memo, East Lime Aquifer Protection Agency from William Maholland, Aquifer Protection Agency Agent Zoning Official. Renewal of four existing business registrations and two registrations dated April 10, 2025. As the Board is aware, the Connecticut Deep is responsible for overall aquifer protection administration, establishing state land use regulations and standards, approving aquifer protection area maps, and local regulations, and developing guidance materials. Municipalities in the program are responsible for appointing an aquifer protection agency, inventorying land used within the aquifer protection area, designating the aquifer protection area boundaries, and adopting and implementing local and land use activities within the aquifer protection area by registering existing regulated activities, issuing permits for new regulated activities, overseeing the facilities, and educating citizens on groundwater protection. In your package, you will find four renewal registrations for the following businesses. These registrations were previously approved and are applying for their five-year renewal. The first one is Advanced Power Equipment, 253 Boston Post Road, Small Engine Repair. Number two is Riverhead Building Supply Corp., 49 Industrial Park Road, Building Supply Retail. Number three is McCaffery Property Services LLC, 28C Industrial Park Road, Landscaping. Number four is Niantic Tool Incorporated, 32 Industrial Park Road, Fabrication of Metal Products. Further, the following application registrations are for two new businesses. These businesses are pre-existing businesses which are required to register with the agency. The first one is Niantic Star LLC, 263 Flanders Road Gas Station. The second one is Niantic Soapy Noble LLC, 230 Flanders Road Car Wash. I have reviewed all the registrations and have found them to be in compliance. These registrations are essentially housekeeping items.
Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Nancy has a question.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Well, I know that this is not the inland wetland agency, but it has occurred to me that the lower area of Soapy Noble spent a lot of time being underwater during the wet season last year.
Can you address that?
I can address that. They have a wetlands permit. They were reviewed by the town, it was approved by the town, the drainage systems, and the drainage system was improved. There is a pipe that runs from the hill across the street, and it's piped pretty much along the northerly boundary, running perpendicular to Soapy Noble down to the wetland. And that carries all that water, and the state water goes down in there, too. Wetlands approved are the designs, so in an extreme storm event, it's designed to have high water, maybe even above the basin in the back. There's a very large basin. It's designed to overflow. The idea is to slow it down so the sediments filter down, and then the water tops over and goes through what I call weeds, but the plants, and filters, and then enters into the stream. So Gary goes out, Gary goes to our wetlands guy, he's out, and I get out on extreme events. We try to get out because we want to pay attention to what's going on. Because, you know, many folks will say, well, there's soap going in, this or that. Soap fencing that we see on construction jobs is never designed to prevent, and is not designed to prevent, soil from passing through it. It's not a dam. It's just a filter. And so some of it will filter, and you'll get some brown water from time to time. So that's really the scoop on Soapy Noble. But yeah, it's all designed, it's all, we pay attention to it, we look at it, and it meets all our requirements.
And there hasn't been any problem with the overflow thing that they have, right? It's been very good?
No, there haven't been any problems. And I know Gary goes out, he goes out in the rainstorms. He enjoys it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the aquifer protection renewal applications for the following addresses and businesses. Advanced Power Equipment, 253 Boston Post Road. Riverhead Building Supply, 49 Industrial Park Road. McCaffery Property Services, 28C Industrial Park Road. Niantic Tool Inc., 32 Industrial Park Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Past 6-0-0. Do we have another motion for the...
Yeah, I'll move to approve the aquifer protection registration applications for the following addresses and businesses. Niantic Star LLC, 263 Flanders Road. And Niantic Soapy Noble LLC, 230 Flanders Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Past 5-1-0. Thank you. Do we have a motion to end this meeting?
Sure, someone.
What? I can't hear you.
To end the meeting.
Second.
Do you want to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
You want a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sorry.
Why not?
I'll bring my dictionary next time. Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have 20 minutes till our next meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, I have a question. For the Soapy Noble out there, do you guys keep a record? I probably should pass it in the meeting, but...
Oh, Roseanne, you made it. Yay, Roseanne. She's a trooper.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Let's call to order the East Lime Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of April 10, 2025, to order at 7:30 PM. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone that came tonight. I'm here, Mr. Peck. Ms. Markowitz is not here, so Sarah will be taking your place. Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Yes.
Ms. Jett Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wiska is still not here, and neither is Ms. Yuhas. Mr. Maholland is here, as well as Ms. LaRocco. Ms. Hardy? Ms. Hardy is here, our ex officio. We have a public hearing tonight. The applications that are on the hearing, make yourself comfortable. Number one, application of Roger Corneys for Charlie's Place for renewal, special permit for outdoor dining at 26 West Main Street, Niantic. Number two, application of Neala Oskus for Niantic Pizza for renewal, a special permit for outdoor dining at 53 West Main Street, Niantic. Number three, application of Martin Zavala for Zavala's for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at 135 Boston Post Road, Niantic. Number four, application of Anna Lathrop for Gourmet Gallery for renewal, a special permit for outdoor dining at 185 Main Street, Niantic. Five, application of Janice Vellin for Rosa Negra for renewal, a special permit for outdoor dining at 214 Flanders Road, Niantic. Number six, application of Steve Carpenter- Number six, application of Steve Carpenteri for Niantic Bay Inn Incorporated, also known as the Lime Tavern, for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 229 West Main Street, Niantic. Number seven, application of Supawa Ah for Spice Club for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 239 Main Street, Niantic. Number eight, application of Chris Herbert for Constantine's by the Bay for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 252 Main Street, Niantic. Number, the next, the next group?
You skipped the East Lime Cafe, Smokies?
Did I?
No, she hasn't gotten to it yet. We're on number 10.
Oh, I have eight for Smokies.
Oh, yeah.
Keep reading.
Okay, keep, well, I'm gonna go ahead. The next wish to renew, but also to amend to include strings of lights. Number nine, application of East Lime Cafe LLC doing business at Smokie O'Grady's for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 306 Flanders Road, Niantic. Number 10, application of Eduardo Martone for Castellas for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 11 East Patagonia Road, Niantic. Number 11, application of Eugene Amini for Black Point Pizza for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 44 Black Point Road, Niantic. Number 12, application of E H LLC doing business as Family Pizza for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 233 Main Street, Niantic. Number 13, application of Leo Roche for Strive LLC for Black Sheep for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 247-2 Main Street, Niantic. Number 14, application of Hannah Fermica for 374 Kitchen and Cocktails for renewal of outdoor dining at 374 Main Street, Niantic. Number 15, application of Chris Herbert for La La Rona for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 267-283 Main Street, also known as 13 Hope Street, Niantic. 16, application of Candace Devanditas for Devs on Main for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 255 Main Street, Niantic. Number 17, application of Andy Sklavoris for Five Churches by the Bay for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 215 Main Street, Niantic. And I believe we have one memo to read.
Memo to East Lime Zoning Commission from the Maholland zoning official, outdoor dining permit renewals. It's that time of year again when all restaurants with outdoor dining facilities which serve alcohol must renew their permits. Section 20.25 of the zoning regulations require that the zoning commission approves each special permit annually, provided that each restaurant has been complying with the outdoor dining regulations. The following restaurant properties will continue to be in compliance with your regulations, and I would recommend reapprovals with the same condition. One, Charlie's Place. Two, Niantic Pizza. Three, Zavala's. Four, Gourmet Galley. Five, Rosa Negra. Six, Lime Tavern. Seven, Spice Club. Eight, Constantine's. The restaurants listed below will need to have their permits amended to reflect installation of additional outdoor lighting in the form of strings of lights installed over outdoor dining space. Generally, the lights have been suspended from poles surrounding the spaces. Those poles provide a structural support for the lights. A review of these installations find that the lights provide a certain ambiance to the dining experience. I would recommend that the board approve these permits, including the additional form of lighting. Number nine, Smokie O'Grady's. 10, Castella's. 11, Black Point Pizza. 12, Black Sheep. 13, Family Pizza. 14, 374 Kitchen and Cocktails. 15, La Rona. 16, Devs on Main. 17, Churches by the Bay.
Thank you. Mr. Maholland, do you have anything to add to this?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to me? Come on up.
My name is Andy from Five Churches by the Bay.
Oh, could you step over and give us your entire name and address for the record? Thank you.
My name's Andrew Sklavoris from Five Churches by the Bay, 215 Main Street. We had put in, I don't know if it made it into this meeting, we wanted to put in between the columns in front of our building. We wanted to put like a roll down. The only way I could describe it is like a horizontal screen that could roll up and down, so we could enclose the area temporarily when it's a little bit colder on our outside bar. I didn't know if that would be covered tonight, just to kind of extend our season.
It's something he and I have discussed. If it's not included in this evening, so we could come back if we had.
Okay, I didn't, I.
Yeah, and it's something we're in discussion with, looking at language. And so, if necessary, we'll come back.
So, if you could come back, that would.
Okay. Do I do another drawing?
We'll talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a question.
The bakery called Sift has outdoor dining.
These are four restaurants that serve alcohol.
Okay.
Only. If they don't serve alcohol, it's a three-year administrative permit.
Anybody else here tonight?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Mr. Maholland, I'm Paul Fermica, 11 South Lee Road, representing 374 Kitchen and Cocktails. I appreciate the opportunity that we've had to do business in the great town of Niantic and look forward to doing more. The one thing I ask is that you consider the different shape of umbrellas. We had a square umbrella, and Mr. Maholland and I disagreed on whether it was a structure or not, and I'm hoping that we can look at something for a creative solution for that, because I think they're, they're the same thing as an umbrella, it's just a little canopy instead of nothing that encloses the building or touches the building. It moves like an umbrella, it shades like an umbrella, goes up and down like an umbrella. So, I know that's not on this evening, but.
We have a hearing for a text amendment.
I'm sorry?
That week. There's a hearing coming up on a text amendment that includes the parameters of umbrellas coming up.
Yeah.
I believe, I don't remember which week.
It's scheduled May 1st or May 15th, I'm not sure.
It's in May.
The text amendment, I don't know if it's been scheduled yet, but I did see, it has been scheduled, May 15. The text amendment says that all umbrellas must be round. And, you know, I'd like to be able to have an opportunity for people to look at the uniqueness of each and every of these wonderful businesses we have in Niantic, up and down Main Street, all the way up from the Lime Tavern down to the bridge. So, I understand the point of it. I know this is probably not the appropriate time to discuss it. You're gonna have a public hearing on that text amendment, I would imagine.
Yes, good, thanks.
I'm happy to do that now, but I wanted to put my two cents in tonight if I could.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments tonight?
Uh-uh.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I motion that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I don't think there's any reason to read every one of those again in the regular meeting. I think you can reference them.
Great.
In my view, it's certainly up to the board and you, as Jeff.
So, do we have any discussion on approving these, or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the renewals for outdoor dining special permits as presented with the same conditions, numbers one through eight.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, it passed at 00. Do we have another motion to approve numbers nine through 17 with the amended lighting?
Okay, sure. Motion now moved to approve the renewals for outdoor dining special permits as presented with the addition of bistro lighting for numbers nine through 17.
Aye, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, it passed at 16.0. There is no old business tonight. We do have minutes to prove.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for last month?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Aye, again.
Oh.
Abstained?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. One extension, five for. Any new business on the floor that the members would like to do?
Subcommittee.
Any subcommittee reports?
Just that we're having a public hearing on April the 24th for the text amendment change.
Which one?
The one changing it from RU 80 to RU 200.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. We did not have any correspondence, public delegations. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about something not on the agenda tonight? Mr. Maholland, do you have any updates?
I really have nothing tonight. We're generally busy.
Okay. Ms. Hardy, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing.
Well done.
Well, get up to the podium, because we have some questions. Mrs. Hardy?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I would like to ask you the question. Has the Board of Selectmen been able to talk about the affordable housing application that needs to be done? There was some conversations that it was 30, they had, he had 30 days, the first selectman, Mr. Cunningham, to be able to do it, but then I heard that that's not accurate. So, there's no time limit on it, I guess. I don't know, but.
The moratorium?
Yeah, the moratorium, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'd spoken with Mr. Cunningham regarding that, and he is aware of it. And, as he said to me, I felt that, I thought there was a 30-day deadline, and he said that it was, it was not that soon, that there was more time for discussion. And I would ask if Mr. Maholland can chime in, whether he's had any additional discussion?
I have not.
So.
No.
So, he, he's where, aware that there is the possibility for a moratorium, and that he's required to sign the authorization for that, if that comes with the recommendation from the zoning commission?
We voted six to zero that he rec, apply for it, so we're anxious to hear.
I understand.
Because the numbers change after, you know what I mean, after a certain period of time, and, you know, the town has paid a lot of money for town council to compile that, and it was a very intense process. It took a year to do. So, you know, we don't want to miss the boat if that's an option, you know, we don't, we don't want to do that.
Well, perhaps Mr. Maholland and I can join forces and, and see if we can get the wheels moving a little faster. We'll see if we can shift into overdrive.
Now, is there also any, anything scheduled on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for town council to come and explain it again?
No.
No.
But I can request that.
I understa, I thought Mr. Attorney Blaisdell canceled. I thought they were going to have him, but then he couldn't come or something.
That's true. We did get a brief, a brief briefing, and then, then the paperwork was not in order, and so we had to withdraw from that, from that meeting.
Would you be able to take back to the Board of Selectmen an idea about painting, like where exactly, where, how it could start? Like, you know, it's different towns, they paint their electric boxes. So, I didn't know if zoning was in on that or not, but they said that Bill, Mr. Maholland said that it was up to the Board of Selectmen. So, would it be possible for you to take back that idea to them and ask them if something they'd be interested, for local artists to do? It's not like.
Could you describe that in a little more detail?
Yeah, you know, the electric boxes that are alongside the road here? They, they paint them in other towns, and they add, they look really nice. And if anybody wants to look at it, they can look at it, and downtown Willimantic is one town that's very close to us, and it totally transformed the town. It's absolute, their main street is beautiful, and it stays, you know, in line with their town, you know what I mean? Like, we wouldn't be painting, you know, what they painted the frogs, we wouldn't be doing that here in East Lime, but, you know, we could do, you know, sea, you know, scallop shells or something.
We'd have to look into that. I'm not sure. I think those utility boxes might be private property, and.
We could maybe get permission, because other towns have done it. I was just curious, because it would add, would add something, you know, nice, especially at the north end of town, you know, there's like, you know, we've tried other ideas and stuff, it would be nice to put something out there that would be presentable and.
I have a question. What, what have they ever decided, or what's going on with the old police station on Main Street?
There's nothing at this point. There's nothing further. We have filed some reports for additional information about, to see about surveying just how bad the contamination is there on the grounds and the property, but there hasn't been any report coming forward from that.
I have one more question. At one time, Amtrak.
That's good, because you're about at your limit.
One time, Amtrak, I know they were looking at replacing that, the fence along the train tracks, because when you come into town from that, you know, you have the new SIF building and the new Dads and Boats Inc., and then across the street, you have that rusted, horrible-looking fence. Well, do you think the train, Amtrak will ever fix that, or what's the status on that?
Weren't they gonna do that at one point, whenever they built, right, Bill, we talked about that, and weren't you involved in that process, Mr. Maholland?
I was involved for a while, a bit more on the periphery. Amtrak has a design that's already installed in Stonington Village along the railroad track, and somehow it got sidetracked here. I think there were some folks who didn't like the design.
Well, it cut the view down.
It got into a discussion, and it seemed to have died on the vine. I think, I think, as I recall, that Amtrak was ready to initiate the change, and it seemed to have gotten sidetracked, which I was not involved with, so I don't know the particulars.
Is there any way to, like, find out what's going on with that?
I'll try.
That'd be great.
And Mrs. Hardy, I'd like to thank you for reading the literature, literature on the short-term rental at the meeting. It was a very, it's a very large packet of information, and it was quite apparent that you read it, and I would like to personally say thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Hey, you're welcome. And on the matter of money, which we all have somewhat of a vested interest in, because it's our money for the town budget, that, that has proceeded from, forwarded from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance. I was not at that meeting last night, but they had quite a bit of discussion, final discussion on the budget, and I believe they made some cuts, some reductions, but I'm not, I don't know what they were, but that'll be going to public.
It wasn't us, because we don't have any.
That will be coming up, obviously, and then eventually going to referendum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry I missed the aquifer meeting.
We can fill you in. Mr. Peck, did you by any chance go to the planning meeting?
Yes, I did. They were working on a 20-lot subdivision off of Holmes Road, same developer that we declined on affordable housing, but this is regular housing. It was delayed, continued the meeting, the discussion, quite a bit of discussion. I was curious to know if they were following the conservation-by-design development. I know they have to bounce this off of you.
They, I believe that one is, but I thought that was an affordable housing application.
Yeah, it is.
And so that, and that was the applicant's choice, so it's sort of new ground, and.
If it's an affordable housing project, where are they going to the planning?
Well, it's, the theory right now is it's an affordable housing subdivision application. For me, our question is if it's just a subdivision, they subdivide lots, is there another step that they have to come here?
Okay.
And that has yet to be explored.
It was just a subdivision application, yeah. All right. There's another three-lot subdivision that was approved off of Heritage Road. And there was interesting discussion about the referral of the five-lot zoning up in the north end of town. They, there was no discussion whatsoever. They, there was no discussion whatsoever about water quality and the reasons why this board proposed it. The only thing they talked about was, the zoning board doesn't want any, want to stop development or slow down development. I believe it was unanimous, the recommendation of opposing this amendment, which, one of the, one of the reasons elaborately presented was that if we have this kind of zoning, it's going to promote 830G affordable housing projects. Because, oh, they can do whatever they want, which further fortifies my opinion that they were totally uninformed of what this board was aiming at, which leads me to my very old recommendation that somebody that knows what's going on informs the planning commission of that. I would have loved to just simply, non-biasedly, just explain where the zoning board was coming from, but I couldn't say anything. I've been sitting here a long time, and we have ignored their recommendations many times because, and I don't fault them totally, but they're uninformed, and somebody should be there to explain before they make their decision what they're talking about. So, I'll leave it at that.
And there was a few comments that were made stating that zoning wasn't following the P O C D, and we absolutely are, and we, we have done that. It's right there. I mean, it's, you know, in the matrix on the P O C D, which all that information was provided, and, you know.
At any time since you've been on the board, have people ever gone and presented to planning or vice versa or?
The only person that could would be.
Let, let me just.
Or a non-zoning board member.
Yeah, let me just briefly comment, they have professional staff, our minutes are readily available, I am right there, door's open, anybody's welcome to come. I've had some discussions with the planner, but they are an independent group, and they may see things differently, regardless of what your discussion is or any input I may have. Because there's, they have staff like you do, and we provide materials, so that's our part of what we do.
Bill's a lot of things, but he's not biased, and I think he would do a very good job of delivering information if you, as part of the job description, but it really should be, they're just running on empty.
It's probably hard for you though, right, Mr. Mulholland, to be, I mean, at least, at least they would, like Mr. Peck said, that they would be making an informed decision of what, they don't have to agree with us, but at least I feel like their decision would be informed.
This commission's views and opinions are in your minutes, they're on the tape, they're readily available to anybody who wants to look and find out what you were actually thinking, what your discussion was. This is not new over the years, as Norm has pointed out. And I will say that this group may have one opinion and another group of people may have a completely different view for whatever reason, and you may look at the same facts.
Is there any practical result of their having voted against the amendment?
In, in, the statute is that if they turn it down, you need a two-thirds vote in zoning to approve it, but you sit six members, so it's four-two, you need two-thirds all the time anyway, so it becomes a moot point unless there's only five people sitting, and we typically don't have that. I think that's happened twice in 30 years.
So, you need four votes to pass it regardless?
Yes.
A lot of them comment that as a result of that meeting, I've had numerous people speak to me about it, and so I think there is, the public is becoming aware that there's a gap someplace, and I've had several people speak to me that they were not in agreement with the planning.
Yeah, I would, I would expect that to be a fairly well-attended public hearing.
Bill, I have another question too, for, just because, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it, because what they're doing at Hall's Road is new, and they've never done it in East Line ever in the history with the 20 units that we just talked about with affordable housing. So, whenever there's affordable housing like that, the lots have to go, because they're allowed to have 30%, has to be 30%, correct, up to 30%? No, it has to be 30% to qualify for the 830G.
Depending on how they apply, but.
Okay.
They use 830G, which has not been done before.
Right. So, my question is, is the land that comes with the unit also has to be affordable? It's the whole unit with the land, correct?
And that, I don't know the answer to that, it's a very good question, and I have the same question.
I was told that it does.
I'm starting to explore that, and I will probably be talking to our legal counsel because I have some additional questions, because for me, if they approve a subdivision, are they approving buildings? Are they approving apartment buildings? Are they single-family home, what, and I haven't read the application, so I'm, I've got to get up to speed.
Right.
Because that question for me, is this board involved at all? I don't know the answer, so I will be exploring that and I will report back.
Well, those are very concerning points for everybody, us and people that live in East Line and, you know, anybody that, further developers that, you know, want to do the affordable housing. Second of all, when they, when they're planning a subdivision, there's 20 proposed, or gonna be 20, that's the talk, we haven't got it in front of us yet, but I'm just asking a hypothetical question at this point, 20 units, what if there's a space in that development where there's, where there's nothing, but there's, is there supposed to be something out there? I mean, you, I mean, can they put a development up and leave a space blank? Because usually with planning, all the spaces are taken up.
Well, it'll be, it'll, if it's 830G, then the question is, do any of the, and, and this is more appropriate probably for the planning staff at this time. What are they asking of the planning commission? What's the application consist of? Is it a legitimate application? I don't know any of those things. I think the board, the planning board approved it, or they, I haven't filed it because I have enough on my own plate, we kind of leave them to what they do.
They continue the public hearing, they're still in the middle of it.
So, I mean, I have questions too, because for me, it's a new vehicle, and I am not up to speed on it, and as I said, I'm concentrating on what you folks do and, and the zoning aspects of it. However, because it seems to be some type of hybrid application, I'm curious as to what the law is, what it isn't, what the ramifications.
Right.
What, do we have any responsibility, do we not? How is 830G applied? All the usual things. And so, there's a bit of a learning curve, and I'm going to explore that as well because I am.
Thank you.
Candidly and sincerely curious as you.
Right, well, we can't start a precedence that's not there because this is new, so we need, and, you know, the town needs to be very careful about what they're doing.
The, the planning board, if necessary, will seek advice from our legal counsel and our, and all the staff.
And that would be, Mr. Blaisdell?
More than likely, yes.
Okay. Anything else tonight? Do we have a motion to adjourn the, yes?
How, how we, how is the information going to be brought out for a public hearing? As to, anybody can speak at a public hearing?
At which public, the one for the zone change?
For the, yeah, for the planning commission.
Well, that's up to them.
Oh, that's them.
Well, yeah, that would be them, and if it's a.
But can a member of zoning?
No.
Go and speak?
Why not?
That's what I thought.
No, because you would have a conflict, there's a state statute, it's a project, you can't speak as a member of the zoning board. You could go and speak as an individual.
Right, yeah, but we have to stand up there and say that we're a member of zoning, but we're not in that capacity at, while we're at that.
And you're speaking for yourself.
Right, exactly. So, we can do it, but we just, we have to make that disclosure.
Okay, anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.